It is now seven P M. Welcome to the Monday, February fifth, twenty twenty four Town Council meeting. Our meeting this evening is broadcast live on the Town Double Look YouTube channel. Once on the channel, please click on the live button. We are also doing a backup just in case. We've been working on refining our camera system. We had some audio challenges last council meeting, but I think the direction we're heading is going to be really, really good. And we've got multiple directional shots with closed caption that we're able to capture with the new technology. So bear with us through this week. I think we may have it down this week, but we'll see after we look at it later tonight. Out of respect for all those in attendance, please refrain from talking to other members of the audience during the meeting, and if you could, please silence all cell phones. I'm going to ask our Town Secretary Eileen Kennedy to please call the vote.
Mayor Johnson.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Wardney.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Wellen.
Here.
Ms. Hillier. Mr. Dietrich.
Here.
Dr. Kay.
Yes, we have a form.
Thank you. All right, I'd like to have Deputy Mayor Pro Tim Wellen will now lead us in the invocation.
Dear Lord, thank you for bringing us here together to do the work of this town, help keep all of our first responders safe as they go about keeping our citizens safe from harm. Thank you for the, um, thank you for making this town a great place to live and continue to help us do our best to serve this town. Amen.
For all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas. One state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. Before we begin this evening, I'll set some ground rules just to ensure the conduct and the prompt concise medium. All council members will be held to three minutes per question and answer. A total time allocated for any Q and A session, agenda item will be fifteen minutes max. And obviously, we'll take our time, which is what we're normal to do, so somebody doesn't get to hog the time and we'll make sure we pass it around. Thank you. Item two, citizen comments, non-agenda subjects. The next segment of the council meeting is intended for citizen comment on any subject except for those that appear in the agenda. Those citizens wishing to address an agenda item will be recognized at the appropriate time. Any citizen comments at this time will not receive any verbal council response, nor must the citizen expect any discourse with the mayor or any other council member. This is a procedural rule not intended to convey lack of interest or discourtesy, but rather to provide time for all citizens to speak and to move on to new business of the council. As a reminder, all town council proceedings, including citizen comments, are recorded for timekeeping purposes, recordkeeping purposes. Excuse me. I did pick this up about twenty seconds early. Does anybody else would like to add their name to an agenda item? I know that you came in a little bit late or came on time. I took it in the loop. Are you good?
I'm good.
Okay, thank you. All right. Item number three, consent agenda. All consent agenda items listed are considered to be routine by the town council, will be enacted on by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member requests in which the event, the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in a normal sequence on the agenda. Information concerning consent agenda items is available for review. We've got three items on the consent agenda. The first is the consent and action of minutes of the January sixteenth, twenty twenty four meeting. I'm going to read them first, and then we'll come back. Item number two is consideration and action on the payment to linear traffic markings for striking on Simmons Road in the amount of twenty-six thousand five eighty-seven point eighty-eight. That is procedural and transparency. We, again, we said as a council, we would chair with the town when we pay these bills, and that's really all we're doing with that one. And then consideration and action on extended warranty for Dell server through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Again, that is a, it's basically an annual fee that we pay, and these are for our servers. Again, we're bringing these out to the citizens and to the council. With that said, are there any corrections to the minute, council?
I know that when we approved the cell phones, the twenty cell phones, it just says on there for town council and full-time police officers, and I thought we agreed that it was not the town council.
Yeah, can we go ahead and make that correction?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, just remove the town council. Good catch. Thank you. Any other changes? Okay. Anything on the linear traffic marking, striking bill? The council approved it already. This is just us paying it and showing it. And the extended warranty for the Dell server. Any questions there? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
I move that we approve the consent agenda items.
Any a second?
Second.
Yeah.
You may reset.
Please.
I move that we approve the consideration and action of minutes of January sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, consideration and action of payments of linear traffic marking and striping of Simmons Road in the amount of twenty-six thousand five hundred eighty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents, and the extended warranty for the Dell server through January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five.
Now, give it a second.
Second.
All right.
I was just going to say ditto, but I didn't know that worked.
No, excuse that thing. I think, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Wellen.
Aye.
Dr. Kay.
Aye.
Mr. Wardney.
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
All right, the consent agenda and the consideration on the linear traffic markings, as well as the extended warranty pass. All right, moving on to item four, mayor, council members, and staff report. We'll start with the council. Dr. Kay, start over here.
I'm always first. Um, I don't have anything right now.
Okay.
Randall, I should have got you in the morning. We talked about the bids for the room.
Yes.
Have those been, done anything with those? I don't know if you were going to get to that or not.
I have them, but I did have a couple of things that actually moved into the way of that that we'll talk about tonight, but I do have.
Yeah, on your list.
Yes, sir.
Anything else?
Nope, that was it.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Pro Tim.
Nothing for me.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Yeah, I just, I got a letter today, and I'm sure that our people are going to be talking about it, so I think we need to check in. Cross Timber's Water Supply Corporation, a letter talking about them violating some federal law and statutes. I just, I don't know if anybody knows anything about, you know anything about it, anybody?
We don't.
Do we know anything about it?
No. None of this.
I mean, basically, it says, you know, what should you do, and there's nothing you do at this time, but it's like, I guess I don't get why they're sending this out if there's nothing to do at this time, and if there's no repercussion, if there's no whatever.
I can get clarity on it, and then I can follow back up on it.
Okay.
There's not a problem at all.
Why don't you do that, and then get the information to me, and I'll put it in the Friday update.
That's perfect. We'll do it.
Because, yeah, I was, we picked up the mail before we left and saw it, and I was like, I don't have time for that right now.
Yeah, and if you read it, it's like, why don't you send the letter out if you don't have any explanation or anything you're doing, and then now it's just aggravated, so.
I just had a couple of brief comments. Obviously, we're, we've passed that point of no return. Spring is right around the corner. Starting to get a little bit brighter, right? Out there in the mornings and in the evenings, so, but at the same time, the grass is starting to green up, and the weeds are starting to come back, so we want to make sure that we stay in compliance with all that. But more importantly, I'm looking forward to tonight and to hear from Carl Deaton with our town audit. I'm super excited about what he's going to report out tonight, so looking forward to that. Public works.
Couple of updates. One of the things I wanted to bring forward in the next council meeting, we will be bringing forward the septic for engineering review. We did reach out to three companies for a bid package. One of them reported back that we did need to build out plans by an engineer since we are looking at future, future locations for the septic in the event that we ever want to expand the building, maybe relocating that actual septic system that we are, because we're already looking at upsizing the system, so in the wake of that, we've talked to them about looking at a different location altogether, and so I'll be bringing that forward. They were really close to getting it right before this agenda came out regarding the cost analysis on that, so we'll be bringing that forward next time.
And for the citizens, if you're not aware, our, the septic system that's tied to this building and to the Double Look Volunteer Fire Department is grossly inadequate. I believe it might have been put in when they had the old trailer, very first trailer, if I'm not mistaken, and now we're running, obviously, all the activities here. We've had council meetings, we've had instances where the Double Look Women's Club has been here, and things have backed up. It continues to happen when the Double Look Volunteer Fire Department gets done with a, running a call, they come back, they have to do laundry and such, and that adds to the load. Bottom line, it's just, we've just outgrown it, and unfortunately, it's an expense that we're going to have to incur this year as soon as possible so that we can avoid any further damage that could occur if we have a really bad situation. So we'll be bringing this all the way through. We probably going to have to do some, go through P and Z too, maybe on this?
No, we shouldn't on this one.
Okay.
I don't believe so.
But I tell you what, Andrew, we'll keep you guys updated, we'll keep board adjustments updated on what we're doing, just to make sure we do it all the right way. Does that work for both of you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll take some extra steps to ensure that everybody's in the know, but we do, we have to tackle this, we got to get it taken care of.
So that, on that front, that's where we're at with the septic system. As we talk this evening, we'll definitely be covering one of the agenda items, which we're going to be talking about crack seal. That will, that came forward, so we do have a bid for that. As far as permitting, permitting is going well. We continue to see a lot of residents doing updates to their homes and adding square footage. That, this has never too amazed me. Been a part of bigger cities, and Double Look just seems to continue to grow and improve, so it's great. I'm glad, everybody's blessed in that area, so we continue to see that, and that's been a huge blessing. Outside of that, everything else has been going really smoothly.
Anything I handle control?
It's in his December reports in the packet.
Thank you. Administration.
We, the C D that we have at, at Independent Financial renewed on February the first at interest rate five point one, so we wanted to let you know about that. And also, the year-to-date is in your packet if you have any questions. I didn't want to point out one thing, but January's payroll is not in there because they haven't mapped all of our general ledger stuff, so there'll be a big update.
And for the citizens and for the council, we're obviously moving to the pay comm system, which was voted by the council and approved. We're implementing that now. We've had a successful, like, two successful payrolls, or one?
Well, this will be the second.
Second one, and it's really going to help us from the time of attendance, P T L, all of that sort of thing, doing the payroll, so we're really, we're taking a step into the automated world of what, of efficiency, which we should have done many years ago, so we'll make the appropriate entries. It's going great. I've attended as many of the sessions I can online, listening to the training and stuff, so we're pleased with the progress we've made in a short period of time. We tried to implement this over the holiday, and that made it a little bit difficult, but we're getting through it quickly, so it, now they've asked for me to get my stuff set up so I can do my approvals and stuff, so super excited about it, so thank you. Anything else I need?
Yes.
All right. Public safety? Chief.
Yes, sir. In your package, you should have two reports in there, the call for service reports, the number of calls we had prior month, and the number of counts for citation reporting. I don't know if you had an opportunity to look at it, but in the package, we'll be going to a quarterly reporting of the citation and calls for service, so you don't get the same, to get a better view of what's going on out there, and give you a better report of comparisons with the previous quarter. I had a citizen that spoke last week on the four oh seven traffic cameras. Randall was able to send my information to Flower Mouse Traffic Unit. They did email us back, they informed me that, they really didn't see any issues out there, because they would go back and look at it and look at what's going on in real time. The light at four oh seven Cedar Crest, they rebooted the sensor, see if that worked. The other concern was four oh seven turning onto Simmons Road Southbound. They increased the time of how long that arrow stays up, so that was done. They said they didn't notice any other issues through the system, but if a citizen sees that there are still issues, we'll address it and see if we can go from there and have to take a look at it again.
Mr. Chavez, have you noticed anything, any difference?
I've noticed it's been turning green to turn left more frequently.
Okay. And I know Cedar Crest, I use it every morning, and it's, it works because I have one of those buttons in my car. Ed, you need to get one of those buttons. Just kidding, I don't have a lot.
So yes, that's all I have for reporting. Of course, and further on, on the agenda, we'll be speaking reference to other agenda items.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Roads committee.
No new updates at this time. We'll talk about crack seal, of course, that's coming up, and then here in the near future, we'll be talking about the mill and overlay projects.
Okay. And drainage committee.
I'm on it, yeah. Aren't you all meeting, you don't meet with them?
Yeah, we're waiting for the deliverable now.
Okay.
So, yeah, we had, we had our team's meeting to where they went over it, and then they're putting together all the documentation now for us. So, and once we get it, then we'll be coming back to the drainage committee and the council.
Good.
Okay. All right. Item five, new business agenda, discussion and consideration and action on fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit report. Presentation is by town auditor Carl Deaton. Carl, come on up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You have in front of you the audit and financial statements for the last fiscal year ending September thirtieth. It seemed like I see several new faces on the council, so don't hesitate to ask a question about anything I say or anything that you might see, but I do want to go over the report and make sure that you understand the numbers, hopefully. So if you turn to page twenty-two, page twenty-two is going to show you a summary of the revenues and expenditures for the town this last fiscal year. That middle column, called special revenue funds, we'll look at the detail of that in the back later, but basically, everything that's not already earmarked for a particular purpose, when it comes in to the town, goes to the general fund, and the general fund is the fund that you are required to legally adopt the budget for the spending of those dollars, and this is where you're going to find the property tax revenue, sales tax revenue, franchise taxes, the court fines, all the permits and fees and so on. But in this column, you see two point five million dollars of revenue this last year, two point five million of expenditure, increase in your fund balance of twenty-one thousand dollars. But that's after you spent almost a half million dollars on roads this last year. Even at that, you still were basically at about break even, added twenty-one thousand to increase the fund balance to two point four million dollars at the end of the year. You spent two point five, and you have two point four, almost a year's worth, in your fund balance at the end of the year. However, if you turn back to page twenty, which will show the assets and the liabilities in that same fund balance of the general fund, at the bottom, you'll see that of that two point four, about one point three of it is labeled as committed fund balance. That's where you, as a council, have identified several specific future needs in the areas of streets, roads, stormwater, technology, things like that, and there's a list of those back in the footnotes later in the report of things that you say, okay, of that two point four, we think we're going to have these future needs, they're going to take one point three of that, that after those commitments are carved out, and those commitments can be changed at any time by you as a council, they're not written in stone, but they're kind of written in stone until, in the audit report, until you do change them. The rest of the fund balance is called unassigned fund balance, which is still well over a million dollars. That unassigned fund balance of a million seventy-one is about five months' worth of your spending last year. And I would always stand up here as an auditor and tell you, you need to shoot for a minimum of three months' worth of fund balance in reserves, because you have periods during the year of low cash flow. Property taxes don't start coming in strong until, until December. You know, you normally go a good bit of the summer and fall without collecting hardly any property taxes. Sales taxes can fluctuate, and for sure, things like building permits and other fees can fluctuate, but still, even at that, you've got a very healthy unassigned fund balance as well. And the very top of that column on page twenty will tell you that basically, just about all of that, or more than that, is funds you had in banks at the end of the year, so it's all cash on hand. Okay, the special revenue fund column, I refer to the detail of that is back on page fifty-eight, toward the back of the report. On that, on these two pages, you'll see basically eleven additional accounting funds that are used to track dollars, and these are dollars that's basically, the minute they come in the door, they're already earmarked for a particular purpose, and so they are not required to be budgeted, they're not part of your general fund budget, because they just are required to be spent according to that purpose. So this is where you'll see the court technology and security fees that are restricted for those purposes that come in every time you collect a court citation, the police training funds that come from the state every year, the child safety funds that come partly from court citations, but also partly from the county, the one police grant on page fifty-nine, the Ruben was able to get this last year, and then the, right next to that, you see the S L F R F funds. Again, you received two installments of those over the last three years. You've got until the end of twenty twenty-six to spend that money, so you still have a good three full years to spend that remaining three hundred twenty-three thousand. The sewer system maintenance, those fees that were collected, and then the one new one this year is the fiftieth birthday fund. You've had a couple donations for that event, and so again, they're being tracked in a special fund, make sure that they're spent on that event. I also might point out the child safety fund. Basically, you see all of that spent, to the extent you get those funds in, the payroll of the crossing guard that you do budget for is moved over here, because that's basically, again, those funds can only be used for child safety activities, the crossing guard qualifies for that, and so that basically helps, helps the general fund not have to spend five thousand dollars if it would spend otherwise.
Carl, I have a question.
Yes.
So last, at the last council meeting, the council approved an additional funding for the fiftieth birthday fund. It was what? Seventy-two thousand dollars.
We already, we already had ten in that.
Right, so it's sixty-two. So basically, then, we just need to come in and take the money from a fund, the gen, or not the.
Fund balance.
Fund balance, excuse me, and move it into this fund.
And you can do that, that's correct.
Yeah, I just wanted to verify that, so that is, that's what we discussed doing, I just wanted to verify.
So in next year's audit, it will basically show that money being transferred out of the general fund and reduce its fund balance and come into this fund, not as revenue, but as a transfer in.
Correct.
To show that it's come from another source, but yes, and that will, that will basically give you an easy way to track that, depending on it, by segregating it over here.
Okay, thank you.
So bottom line, on page fifty-nine, the total column, you have three hundred fifty-nine thousand dollars of basically earmarked funds for particular purposes. Three hundred forty-three of that is the remaining S L F R F funds. The ones that are hardest to spend are those court security funds. You know, there's only so much you can do in the area of court security, but it's like four dollars, it comes in with every court citation, and three dollars, it comes in for the court technology. According to dollar, you need to buy computers and software and things like that for that system. The security's the one that's hard to spend, that's why you get twenty-one thousand dollars that's still there, that will just always be carried for that purpose. Okay, so that covers all of the funds of the town. Couple of things at the back of the report I wanted to point out. Beginning on page sixty-two through page sixty-five is where you'll find the detail for the revenue and the expenditures of the general fund. There were just summary totals, departmental totals back on page twenty-two that we looked at, but page sixty-two, for instance, is a more detailed breakdown of the town's revenue compared to the budget you adopted, compared also to the prior year. So this is where you can see that, like, for instance, interest rates were so high this last year toward the bottom, you got, you received a hundred seventy thousand dollars of interest earnings on that two-plus million dollars that you had in account compared to twenty-seven thousand the year before, so that obviously helped out the general fund tremendously, but you could also see that court citations were a good bit over what you budgeted, and the electric franchise, for some reason, was quite a bit over budget, and some of the building permit activity was. Overall, at the bottom, you collected two hundred sixty-six thousand dollars more revenue than you anticipated spending or collecting in your adopted budget. And then page sixty-three, sixty-four, and sixty-five is a breakdown of all the expenditures. These categories are basically what you're used to seeing, the breakdown on your monthly QuickBooks-generated financial statements that you get from Eileen on a monthly basis, but the bottom line here on page sixty-five, you budgeted to spend two million five forty-eight, you spent two million five sixteen, so that's what you like to see, is that you, the spending was under budget, and the revenues were over budget, which lends itself to conservative budgeting. Two-thirds of the way down, page sixty-four, is where you'll see, as I was mentioning, you spent a good bit more in road repairs than you did the previous year.
Right.
Total of five hundred seventy-nine thousand on streets and drainage compared to three seventy-five the year before, so that increases in revenue allowed you to be able to do that. Page sixty-six is a schedule that is not required, but I'll include it in here, of basically the year's activity in the assessment and collection of property taxes. So that left column will tell you that cumulatively, citizens or taxpayers owe nineteen thousand dollars of delinquent taxes, going back to day one to the town. End of the year in the right column, it was only seventeen thousand at the end of the year. You levied a million two hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars of taxes this last year, all but seventy-four hundred dollars of that was paid by September thirtieth, which could be just a couple homes, you know, in the town, that's seventy-four hundred dollars. So the tax collection schedule looks good as well. In the very middle of the report are twenty, twenty-five pages of just additional disclosures that disclose, like, the banks you had, a couple banks you had CDs in, what those balances were, and the fact that you were totally insured at the bank following the year. The couple of things I wanted to point out on page forty-eight and forty-nine, of course, you know, town employees participate in the T M R S, the Texas Municipal Retirement System. We're required to basically disclose the, the status of the town's funds down with T M R S, because obviously, you remit, you withhold T M R S from employees paying, the town has to match that, and then that's sent to the state agency, T M R S, they invest that, they pay out retirement benefits. That twenty twenty-three column on page forty-nine, these are basically the status of your funds at T M R S as of December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two, because T M R S is a calendar of your entity, and basically, at the very bottom, you'll see the third line from the bottom. And basically, at the very bottom, you'll see, uh, the, the third line from the bottom, a year ago, the fu, the TMRS was fully funded. You were fully funded with the state, hundred point five-two percent. It dropped to ninety percent this year, but the reason is right in the middle of the page. In every city, school district that I'm, I'm involved with, it's the same issue in that the market just did not do that well in twenty twenty-two. They lost money on your funds. And you see that negative ninety-three thousand dollars, uh, which is basically what they lost on your one point three million dollars worth of town funds that they have. And, uh, year before, they had made a hundred thirty-seven thousand. Two years ago, they had made seventy thousand. So, you know, the percentage you're funded is going to fluctuate at, you know, what factor is what they do with your money and whether they made money or not on it. And they will adjust, just they will adjust your employer rates, your town rate and times that you pay. In fact, they do adjust it annually, but they could adjust it up if they feel like you're not funded enough. Ninety percent really is a very good funding rate. Most pension people tell you, till you fall below eighty percent, that there's really nothing that needs to seriously be looked at to see if any adjustments need to be made. So just want to point out, that was still in good shape. And then last but not least, I'm gonna go back to the very front of the report, uh, page seventeen. Um, what we looked at were all the, of the funds. And of course, you, the general fund is what you should be most concerned about. That's the one you should be monitoring, that's the one you budget, that's the one you need to be comparing to your budget to see how you did. And of course, those special revenue funds are there just to spend according to those purposes. Page seventeen is a consolidated asset liability statement for the town. So all of those funds are combined into one statement here along with all of your capital assets and any long-term debt that you might have. And of course, you have no long-term debt in the form of bonds, notes, things like that. The only thing that's carrying as a long-term debt is unpaid PTO. Uh, that is considerably long-term debt that I have to record because any hours owed to an employee that they've, that they've accumulated, uh, that's owed to them when they are terminated or they voluntarily leave, that's a liability to the town. And so that is always quantified at the end of the year. And it's only thirty-six thousand dollars, as you see in those liabilities for the town. So if the town shut down, they owe thirty-six thousand dollars to all the employees, uh, as of September thirtieth for unpaid PTO. Uh, the bottom line, the reason I pointed this statement, because you have virtually no long-term debt and you've got a lot of capital assets, this building and the police vehicles and all that, all of that adds to a very positive bottom line of three point six million dollars. Assets minus liabilities for the town, uh, comes to a positive three point six million dollars. Uh, the, um, page eighteen to nineteen is just the consolidated income statement, but three point six million per tenure size is really very strong. And it's because you've done things in the past, like build this building without borrowing. You know, that, uh, that was really quite an accomplishment years ago. And you do things like spend half a million dollars on roads by generating general fund revenues rather than selling bonds or certificates of obligation. So as long as you're able to continue to do that, then, uh, this statement will continue to look strong as well. Uh, I, I will also point out, the very front of the report is about a six or seven-page narrative that basically is a, is a narrative discussion of all these numbers. So if looking at pages of numbers just make you cross-eyed, you can look and read this narrative. And in particular, I would point out on page thirteen, twelve, and thirteen, there is a requirement to basically talk about what's going on in the town. And some, uh, some about twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-three and twenty twenty-four, the mayor was gracious enough to write this for me. Uh, there, the town treasurer has done this for me in the past, but, uh, Patrick stepped in and put together this narrative because this is really, this has nothing to do with the audit, but it's a required section in this narrative in the audit report. So if you didn't see that, that's basically where the mayor is, uh, talking about what's going on in Dubalog. So, because once this report is, report is approved by y'all, it becomes public record. So anybody can get a hold of it and see it. Uh, Eileen's got an electronic copy of it and, uh, can also get, get you more printed copies if you need it. But that's basically all I wanted to go over. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer it. I, I met with the mayor and, uh, uh, to go over the report and just to share things, uh, just a few issues you ran across in the audit, nothing really significant, nothing significant enough to put in a letter to, uh, to the council. But, uh, there's always, you know, nitpicky things you run across in doing an audit as far as procedures, controls, documentation, things like that. But overall, you know, I'm pleased with the system that, that's got especially since for years now and continuing with Patrick, you've got a mayor that's quite a bit involved in the approval process because with limited number of people in the, in the, uh, office area, you as a council are under important control. And the mayor, uh, making sure he signs and approves disbursements and, uh, apparently payroll too, uh, that, those sort of things are under important control as well. All right, I've talked enough. You got any questions? Yes?
Second question. So we came out good in that we did not overspend our, what we took down, but there were some things that we went over on the budget itself.
Mm-hmm, correct.
So, and some of those we were paying out of fund balances, like our roads, for instance. We had expected to go over from what we budgeted and we were going to use money set aside in the fund balance. Do we still need, it's my understanding that we need to move that over and do a transfer between that fund, even though we had the money, to make the accounting correct?
Well.
Is that correct?
Right, you know, some of those committed fund balances, you're right, you, you know, you have fund balance committed for, for roads and for streets and drainage. And if you, if you spent some of that on a particular project that you had in mind last year, then yes, as you adjust those committed fund balances, you would reduce that one. Yes.
Okay.
Now, you know, I know the interim statements that you got during the year showed that you made like a two hundred thousand dollar profit. And it's because part of those road costs you charged in the accounting books just directly against that committed fund balance. Well, government accounting standards say you still show that expenditure through the income statement. And you then, what you do is you just reduce then that committed fund balance moving forward. And so, uh, uh, maybe, maybe didn't, that's, didn't say that that clear, but yes, I understand what you're saying because yes, you, you intentionally spent money on roads that you didn't think the budgeted revenues would be able to cover, and you thought you were spending it out of fund balance. And a part of that fund balance was, is now not needed because you've done that road project, yeah, you, you need to come in and reduce that commitment, move that much back to the unassigned, assign it to the septic system, whatever other needs, because, I mean, septic system is not one of those that you've identified. So as new needs come up, that's what I'm saying. I'm locked into showing these until you make a change, but at any time, you can make a change to say, okay, we don't need as much in the road commitment fund balance. We, because we've already taken care of some of that road need, we can move it over into a septic system sort of reserve fund balance or move it into whatever.
So council at the next meeting, so in many, in years past, we would have had an approval of the budget and then the next item would have been approval of moving fund balance. I chose not to do that. I'd like to do this in steps and then we will be able to be prepared to make those fund balance adjustments at our next council meeting.
Based on the audit.
Based upon the, that is correct.
But yeah, bottom line, because your revenues came in over two hundred thousand dollars on the budget, you basically funded those additional road repairs out of current year revenues. You didn't need to use some of that fund balance, uh, that you had earmarked for it. And so that fund balance is still there to move on and do something else with it.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we, procedurally, we still had to do that because it was like, yay!
Yeah.
But yes, okay, thank you.
So we will do that at the next meeting.
And the unassigned funds, which we're five months to the good on right now.
Yeah.
You say we should maybe be only carrying it three months.
Well, I'm saying, I, I think you should always carry a minimum of three.
Okay.
Uh, you know, if, if you want to draw that down more toward three, I wouldn't say you're making a mistake, but it's just up to you. I mean, I, I go to some cities or schools and they, they want to have six months, you know, on the side. It's just, it's just up to you. It's also just up to the nature of your revenues. You know, you, you know, if you've got revenue, a, a good chunk of revenues that fluctuate, you know, then you might need more than three months on hand. But, you know, your sales taxes fairly fixed, uh, your property taxes are fairly fixed, except you just have, they come in all in one chunk, couple, over a couple of months during the year, but you really don't have any revenues to fluctuate very much. So that's why I think closer to three months would, would serve you just as well if you've got needs for some more of that unassigned fund balance to be spent on.
Okay. So in that regards, council, that'll be a, a very, um, a very highly precise and reviewed process of if, if this council decides to move some of those funds into some other fund balances. And citizens, this will be crystal clear on what it is we may do with it if we do anything with it. Um, we, we are, we're not overfunded. We're basically just have more than what we technically could, as you heard Carl say. Doesn't mean we'll do anything, um, but there are going to be some future needs at the town. Some of them might even be discussed here this evening, um, that may in regards to , uh, future, um, cost or expense that's not technically budgeted, might be a place to look at, so.
I went to a city council meeting last month and they have two years' worth of funding in their reserve because they are thinking they're gonna have a really big, uh, drainage project coming up in two or three years. And so they're just building up a tremendous amount so they don't have to borrow money to do it. And so, yeah, there's, there's nothing wrong with having a huge reserve, but, yeah, if you want to basically communicate why you've got such a big amount, that's where you set those commitments. And if they're disclosed in the report, then people will see that.
Thanks. One of the items, and again, all for discussion, we are gonna need to make sure we have five hundred thousand dollars in the bank when they come calling for King's Road. We're currently right close to two hundred thousand. So doesn't mean we catch it up all in one year, um, but it's definitely something that we want to make sure that we are adding to each and every year because if they do come calling for King's Road and we don't have the money, then we have to scramble, we go find it somewhere. We don't want to do that. And we also don't want to be in a situation to where when they do call on King's Road and we go, we're not ready, that could dump us out. I mean, think about it, Waken Road ended up being one of the last projects from the two thousand, what was it, two thousand six or two thousand, two thousand six?
Six.
Trip, two thousand six. So let's not put King's Road to that test. Let's get ready. We're gonna get ready here, um, with that as well, so. Just an an idea. Other questions for Carl? Carl, I, um, when I went over to meet with Carl, I was nervous like I was going to the principal's office because I didn't know, I didn't know what to expect since it was my first time. Um, Carl, you are a professional in everything you do. You're, you are spot-on. We love the fact that you are conservative, you help this town, uh, you advise us, and I greatly appreciate in my short tenure as being on the council interim mayor and mayor, um, what you've done for this town, and I'd like to publicly thank you for this work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to thank the previous town council, uh, those who are not here in attendance, that would be, uh, councilperson Wizard Hunt, councilperson Parsons, uh, councilperson Shoenrand, and Billy Garrett, because they were the one that set up the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. I know that was an intensive sessions that we had here, um, but when you see the results like this, I think it's important, um, that we recognize those folks as well, um, for, for their hard work. Obviously, uh, councilperson Hillier was on that as well, myself, and Mayor Donley was involved. So, um, we definitely appreciate what they did to, to have this town budget for twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three come out. I also want to, um, give kudos to the current town council for the way they are looking at and did the process this year, and they're looking out for the citizens and, and how the money is spent in this town. So it's a continuation effort. It didn't start just in the last two years or three years, it's been ongoing, and I appreciate everything that everyone has done to contribute to this. And of course, to the police department, the administration, for each and every day, they're watching the pennies and the nickels and everything they give. So, um, I don't think I forgot anybody. Their public works obviously is in town administration. With that said, um, do we have a motion to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit report?
I move that we approve the fiscal twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three audit report.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All right. We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Portem Wellen and a second by Mayor Portem Gorton. Eileen, could you please call the vote?
Mr. Gorton.
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Ms. Wellen.
Aye.
Dr. K.
Aye.
The item passes, Agenda Ten, consideration action on fiscal year twenty twenty-three audit report is passed. So Carl, thank you.
Okay.
I said he could leave, boy, he was out.
He had a third option.
So, thank you. So, thanks for the, I, uh, I was very impressed. Last year, we had some things we had to change and adjust and all that. We didn't this year, so, uh, I'm really pleased with that. All right, item number eleven, discussion, consideration, and action on a bid for twenty twenty-four crack sealing for Midway Seal Coating and Striping, presentation by Public Services Coordinator. Ooh, you got a new title?
Call me whatever you want. That's exactly what I'm gonna respond to this.
I call him Randall.
There you go.
Randall.
Wear many hats, specifically this one, tonight.
Yes, looks good.
I appreciate it. So we sent out for three bids and again, like last year, for some reason, it's extremely difficult to receive back any bids and get communication even after emails and constant contact, but Midway did respond back, um, which we utilized last year. Um, we were able to put all of the recommended roads, uh, on the list as we did in, on our previous year, and the proposal came back at, uh, the amount that you see before you at twenty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty cents in order to do all of the roads that are on the list for crack seal.
How's that, I can't, I don't have it for me. How does that compare to last year? It's in the neighborhood, isn't it?
It's in the, yeah. And I believe we, I believe we're almost at the same amount of roads. If not, we had a little bit more, but the length of the streets was a little bit more as well, so. But we've been really, really successful with doing actually a lot more streets than in the past. We've been really successful with that. So I know that previously we were down to maybe anywhere from like seven to ten roads and with these bids that, that they've been bringing back and the amount of materials, I mean, we've been, we've been lucky to be able to, uh, do as many roads as we have. So typically, they usually get around ten roads or so that get completed. And we've come back with about fourteen or fifteen and sometimes upwards of about, about, you know, sixteen to eighteen. So as long as they keep bidding it like this, it's been really great. It works out as far as the budgeting goes.
Now, I'm looking at the twenty-three, twenty-four budget.
Yes.
And I think I'm reading this right, we had budgeted fifty-five thousand?
So it would have, should have been, so I'm actually looking at that as well because I was just reading that. I see that we were allocated for thirty-five. I believe we were for twenty-five at one point previously. Or did we up it?
I believe we upped that at the beginning.
We did.
Because we decided that we had some extra tax revenues.
That's correct.
Decided to put it toward that.
Okay.
So, not to say that we have to go spend it all because we got some millon overlay challenges coming up. Um, so obviously, council, um, I'm pleased with the bid.
Absolutely.
So if you want to continue on or if you have other items on?
No, sir, that's it.
Um, but yeah, I, I would say it's great. We, we've got a budget of fifty-five, we've got bids for twenty-six, but we have some millon overlay challenges on a few roads that are gonna cost us a little bit more money.
Yeah. Does this cover Kings at all?
No, Kings will be a difference.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Yeah. And that's what he's hinting to. Uh, the next millon overlay project will be different than our previous, uh, our previous year where we did specific streets. We're going to have to spot check a lot of locations. We're going to have to spot check a lot of locations that are detrimental for the town residents to be able to get in and out of their communities.
Is Ground Port on another list besides just this one? Because I noticed they have a thousand counts listed here, where all the others are a lot less. So is it, was it one of the ones that was also on the mill and overlay?
No, I do not believe it's on this.
It was not?
Not this one, not this one that's coming up.
Okay.
In the previous years, I know that there was a recommendation to go towards that, but because of this last summer and some of the other stuff that's occurred throughout the town, and we started to see a shift in the roads, we have recommended other roads that actually came of, uh, higher, higher importance because of the, the detriment to the roads and the issues that we're starting to see. Those became elevated and needed to be taken care of, so.
Okay.
It was on the list. You're not wrong.
That's what, I thought I remembered it didn't want it to be redone, almost totally redone from that list before.
And so Kings Road here with traffic control, what does that mean?
This is, the traffic control devices is what they include in there to make sure that they let, uh, traffic know that's coming into the neighborhood as they're doing the work.
Oh, they're gonna do.
Traffic control devices.
Okay.
Sometimes that comes in the form of either the signage, and sometimes it comes in the form of flaggers. We typically favor flaggers because we will physically want somebody out there to make, be able to communicate with the residents as opposed to reading it and driving by.
So, so there's gonna be crack sealing on Kings Road. It's just not gonna be the major patches that need to happen?
Correct.
Okay.
Other questions, counsel? No other questions?
I move that we approve the bid from Midway Sealing and Coating and Striping for the twenty twenty-four crack sealing, uh, of the bid totaling twenty-four thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and fifty-six.
Do we have a second?
I second.
All right. We have, excuse me, we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem Gorton and a second by councilperson Favaro, Favero, excuse me. I'm getting better. Um, uh, Eileen, could you please call the vote?
Dr. Kay.
Aye.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Ms. Wellen.
Aye.
Mr. Gorton.
Aye.
Right. Item number eleven passes. Thank you, counsel. Item number twelve. Discussion, consideration, and action on ordinance of the town council of the town of Double O, Texas, ordering a general election to be held on May fourth, twenty twenty-four for the purpose of electing three council members at large. Providing for publication and posting of notices, providing for early voting, providing for the appointment of elections administrators and judges, providing a severable severability clause, and providing an effective date. Presentation by Town Secretary Eileen Kennedy.
This is standard procedure that we need to, uh, call the, order the election. And we will be getting the, um, contract with Ditten County. We, we have a draft contract, but we don't, we won't know how much it's gonna cost us until everybody knows they're gonna have an election.
Yes, it's, usually comes in a little bit late, um, just because of the way it's set up. Currently, we have, we've, and we have two applications, correct?
Correct.
For the, for the three openings. We've had five books checked out.
Correct.
So based upon that, with how many week, we have two weeks left, two and a half?
A week from Friday.
A week from Friday. Um, so unless, uh, nobody comes back that checked out a book, um, you know, there's a good chance that we will have an election. In the event that we only have, um, the, the three, um, there's a possibility that we wouldn't have an election. So stay tuned. It'll be in Friday updates. We post when an application is accepted and approved on our website, so you can go there and look at it too as well, to see who all has, um, uh, applied or put their application in. And I will share that information over the next few weeks as we go through the, uh, Friday updates.
Good.
All right. Any other questions for Eileen? All right. Is there a motion for, uh, this item?
I move, Eileen, you have to see if I can get this right. I move the town of Double O order a general election to be held on May fourth, twenty twenty-four for the purpose of electing three council members at large. Providing for the publication and posting of notices, providing for early voting, providing for the appointment of elections administrators and judges, providing a severability clause, and providing an effective date.
Pretty good. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Wellen and a second by Councilperson Dietrich. Eileen, please call the vote.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Ms. Wellen.
Aye.
Mr. Gorton.
Aye.
Dr. Kay.
Aye.
All right. The item passes. Thank you. Item number thirteen. This is a discussion and consider, or consideration item, so there will be no vote. And that is to setting aside funding for a parking structure to cover the parking spaces on the east side of the parking lot to protect police and public works vehicles from hail and climate weather. Uh, this presentation will be done by Deputy Mayor Pro Tem Pat Wellen. Uh, we will stay on the fifteen-minute rule, uh, on this one because I think it's, it's gonna extend beyond just tonight's, um, discussion. So I think tonight, it's a lot about presenting the idea and the concept. Is that correct?
Yes.
And then obviously foster some questions. And we'll obviously, at some point in time, as we move down the path of this, um, plans, approvals, things like that will all be made public so everybody can see. So Pat, go ahead.
Okay, so I am now the liaison to the police department. And so I went and talked to Chief Previs, and this is the chief Gaines, about what the needs were at the town, what they were specifically concerned about. And one of the things they are concerned about is we've spent so much time and effort of getting some of these new police cars. And how many months did it take you to outfit that last car?
I was about five to six months.
Five to six months to outfit a new car? And we keep them out here where they can be damaged by hail or severe weather. And they park them currently under the pavilion. But as our cars are getting bigger, the pavilion's not getting any bigger. And so we don't have places to park them. So that is a big liability. And from here, I'm gonna let the chief go ahead and speak about the need.
Thank you, ma'am. Counsel, uh, this is an item that I've been discussing with mayors, previous mayors, previous council, uh, reference to protecting our assets out there. We have, uh, probably over two hundred and forty thousand dollars worth of assets sitting out there. And, uh, like Mrs. Wellen said, we've had to run them under the gazebo, uh, trying to fit them all in there. Sometimes we can't get, uh, another person to help the officer move them out there on time, uh, under there on time. Uh, I know one day we're gonna have a big hailstorm that just pops about out of nowhere here in Texas, which they do. Uh, and it's, one day it's gonna damage our equipment. And, uh, we're gonna be waiting and waiting for cars, uh, because, you know, the supply's not out there like, uh, Ms. Wellen said. Uh, we're hoping that we come up with an idea and cost of what it, it costs to put one of these ports out there. Uh, some of the ones we've seen, uh, in Highland Village and Elm Ridge is a canopy-type coverage, uh, but it doesn't protect one hundred percent from water, still water, uh, seeps through there. Uh, but we need something else that really protects, uh, the vehicles, and we're able to still be out there and work on our cars. We had issues moving equipment into our cars, uh, in the rain. Uh, we've, uh, Ms. Wellen has contacted a company just to get some numbers and some ideas of what we're looking at. Uh, I've currently contacted other companies to, uh, give me, uh, an idea and quotes of what I think that we should get. Uh, I'm, I'm pushing more towards metal coverage. Um, and I, in front of you, you have some of the pictures from a company that I'm speaking with. And, uh, posts are not up front. Uh, they're, they would be in front of the car, right? Uh, but they're not, uh, impeding the, uh, for your cars from hitting the post. They're an officer opening the door, hitting the post. So that's what, one of the things we try to avoid. And speaking with Randall on, on looks, uh, we'll be speaking more, uh, what it should look like. Uh, the, uh, the column should, you know, putting brick around them, kind of make them match what the town is. Make them as pretty as we can, right? Not to look just like old carports. So, so we'll be giving more information on this. We just wanted to, um, let the citizens know, let the council know that this is what we're moving towards, and hopefully we can get good numbers and, uh, good quotes. Uh, some of the things that we would have to do, uh, is put lighting under there, electrical. Uh, moving, we have to move our, currently, we have an antenna that's, uh, on the side of the building that is used for relaying, uh, data from our computers, our videos and so forth. And, uh, that's, it's a direct line of communication. And with our bigger cars or smaller cars, they don't get that line of direction. So we'll be able to move the antenna hopefully out there and, uh, be able to transfer that data without having any issues. Um, I don't, do you have any questions referenced to it? So this is just the beginning of, of what we're thinking about, and hopefully, um, we'll find something.
Right. And so we know this will be a larger expense if we decide to do this, if the council decides to move forward with something like this. So that's why we wanted to bring it out so the council could hear about it, citizens could hear about it. We need to work with planning and zoning also, and as part of this. And so we want to just put this out there as an idea as we're looking at what else we might need to do. Because it is a concern when you're thinking about how many, how much dollar-wise, and if we lost our whole fleet all at once, what that would do to the town. Um, Eileen did call T M L, who is our insurance cover, coverer, to see if it would give us any kind of breaks on the insurance. And while it will not give us breaks on the insurance, what the agent came back with was it will give you breaks in that you will not have the loss, it'll be loss prevention. And so we would not sustain the loss that we would, which would increase our rates from sustaining such a loss if we had a hailstorm come here, here, like we did, I think it was eight years ago, where we had that one where it took out people's, what we had, well, not that long ago, back in June. It took out some neighbors' windshields. But the previous one to that was even larger and took out some cars, so totaled some cars. So that's what we want to try and avoid, or what we started talking about.
And one of the concerns of, uh, also moving them, uh, under the gazebos, uh, which Randall brought up, is the weight, how much weight we put on the foundation and surprised we haven't cracked it or whatever, but.
Any questions from the council?
How many spaces do you think it needs to cover?
Oh, we were just, I'm sorry. We wanted to go all the way down on one side. My thing was both sides just to make them look even, but that's for, for discussions with council and the committees to see what's gonna look better for us. But we just wanted to cover that whole side of, uh, ten spaces, I believe, is on the.
I don't know the exact number.
Nine and ten spaces.
It's roughly about, it's about ninety-eight feet long. It's, it's.
Yeah, it's just that east side of the parking lot.
That's correct.
Backs up to the school property.
We thought it would look better if we went the hallway and not just covered five or six spaces and then left the last two or three blank, that we went the whole way. And then that would give us enough coverage also to put the public works vehicle underneath there when it was needed. And then any employees that were working at the time could throw their cars under there if they saw a storm coming, or they could target and put their cars under the pavilion.
Can we just also get different, like, so Eileen, you mentioned the canopy. Like, can you just find the prices for different kinds of materials and all that?
Absolutely. So that's what we talked about, some for, do we wanna look at composition roof? Do we wanna look at metal roof? We know that Highland Village looked at the canopy that is a fabric covering, basically. But that does allow water to come through, so it wouldn't keep the officers from getting wet and the equipment from getting wet. Um, so that's why we're looking at different hard cover type things. We wanna keep it where it doesn't have posts out in the front so that there's no backup type of, uh, problems we may have. Uh, so that's why we're looking at something that's more of an overhang canopy. Why the chief and I were considering that, or why he's asking for that too, is that, that we think can. But we do want it to s- look nice and stay with the architecture of this building. So it doesn't, you know, after you put up something that's metal, and after a few years, it starts looking bad. We don't want that.
Well, I wouldn't even mind, like, even if you could find out from those people, like, okay, this is the canopy, but it only lasts like five years, you know, and then it'll go down.
With the claw cap keys. Yeah, they do have a life expectancy. They degrade over time with the sun exposure. And so that's the other thing we are looking at, asking about is warranties, uh, life expectancy, and what is replacement cost on these? So we are, we've just begun looking. We don't really have a whole lot, but we wanted to put it out there so that we could get public comment back.
And the chief got a, the, the bid, Highland Village just put theirs in recently. And the chief got their bid, or got their, what they presented to the town council, I believe. They, they covered nineteen parking spaces, which would actually do both sides of ours. So we, we either have nineteen or twenty, depending on how you count them, uh, parking spaces, but, uh, there. And they spent a hundred thousand dollars.
And that included electrical and some other things?
Yeah.
Not just.
So that's the number we're kind of looking at. It's gonna be about a hundred thousand plus amount. Because we may be a little bit longer than them, because we want to also come out and cover the sidewalks so that when the officers are loading their, their, their vehicles, they're covered at the same time, staying on the sidewalk as if their car was covered underneath it too, so kind of situation, so.
And we'll come back with further information. Like I said, we, well, it's just the beginning. Uh, wanna get everybody ready that that's coming to the council. Um, I think it's a long time coming. It's been years and years and years, and hopefully, uh, we're gonna make this happen this year.
This needs to be done, I think.
Well, you're talking both sides. You mean the, the far east and the far west?
Well, I'm saying both sides because, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars is what Highland Village did. And that would cover both our sizes. If we did that, we could do it for a hundred thousand dollars.
And I was being more conservative in the money-wise, knowing that we're might have, well, knowing that we're going to have some other expenses. But that's right. It depends on what, since we haven't gotten a bid, I'm not fully sure yet whether, uh, that's why I only put one side down. We'll probably get a bid that covers both to see what it is, to understand the economies of scale or just what it will cost. And then we can make a decision as a council from that point of view, and we can get citizen input also from that point of view, and what it will look like, architectural renderings. All of these companies, as I've been going through it, will give you an architectural rendering as part of this process. So they're gonna give us a look, the way they'll look at what it will look like in, with the building. So it won't just be us, a guess of, we think this will look good. Uh, so, but we haven't gone that far with anybody yet to get anything like that.
Yeah, I was just wondering, uh, clarification on both sides. That would be the, the parking lot right out here, but the far east and the far west, not the island?
Not the middle, no.
Yeah.
And I, I, I don't think, just personally, I don't think the middle would look good. I think we could do the sides and leave the middle open. It'd be great.
All right.
We could check and see if Jerry's not gonna use A T and T Stadium. We could bring it.
Here we go.
I think we could put the whole town.
A roof that comes over.
So citizens, um, again, uh, I think this is, is something that, that needs to be considered at this moment. Um, obviously, we're gonna need to be working with the P and Z and the V of A, feel, board of adjustments to ensure that we're doing all the legal things here with our, our town hall, um, so we can be covered on that. So a little more work for you, for you folks, but I think we're probably in good shape there. So, uh, stay tuned. We'll, um, this will be, uh, on future agendas. And we'll get all this, uh, presentation put together for you and all the details so we can, uh, talk, articulate exactly what it is that we think we can do here for the, uh, for the town and for the town vehicles, so. All right. Thank you, counsel. Item fourteen. Discussion, consideration, and action on purchasing a Dell workstation through Texas D I R contract, D I R dash T S O dash three seven six three for the detective to utilize software for video editing and redacting. Uh, this item in, in discussion with chief. Uh, we're still waiting on a few numbers, and so we are going to.
Yes, sir. Uh, we've been asked that, you, the council postponed this for next council, uh, meeting. We didn't get the quotes in time to be able to present to the council.
So if I'm not, if I'm correct, we need to do a vote to postpone, correct?
Correct.
So do we have a motion to postpone the item, counsel?
I motion that we postpone the discussion, consideration, action of purchasing the Dell workstation through Texas D I R contract, D I R T S O three seven six three for detective utilize software, video editing, and redacting.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion by Councilperson Dietrich and a second by Councilperson Favero. Uh, the mo- the item will be postponed and put on next meeting's agenda. Oh, I'm, sorry. We should vote.
Mr. Dietrich.
Aye.
Mr. Gorton.
Aye.
Dr. Kay.
Aye.
Ms. Wellen.
Aye.
Now we can put it on next week's agenda. Apologize for that. All right. Item number six. Whole business agenda. Uh, council and staff, any announcements or comments? I'll go ahead and start over here with a mayor pro tem. Any?
No, nothing.
Deputy mayor?
Nothing from me.
Nothing additional?
Mark, there always been, you and Gene, why are we gonna be in the middle here?
Yeah.
Um, I really just would, would like to thank the, the council for tonight. I'd like the citizens. Thank you for, for you being here. Thank you. like the citizens, thank you for, for you being here. Thanks for those online. We do have a couple of important things. Detective Rosa Hapman will celebrate her first anniversary with Double Oak on February eighth, 2024. Officer Tim Henderson will celebrate his second anniversary with Double Oak on February fifteenth, 2024. And I think they, they're such integral parts of our Double Oak Police Department.
Yes, sir.
I had the luxury of spending an hour and a half and working through reviews with the chief and the officers over the past week, and I just get more impressed every time I get around them and talk to them and be a part of it. And kudos to chief for the police department that he's built. So thank you. And let's make sure that when we see him, we congratulate him.
Yes, sir.
Saturday, May fourth, 2024 is the general election for Double Oak. Filing starts on the seventeenth, ends on the sixteenth, as we discussed earlier. Two-year term, term's expiring, our two-year term. Council member Jean Hilliard, she's an incumbent, and a one-year term, council member Mark Dietrich, and council member Povero. Dr. Kay is an incumbent. Also, the town hall will be closed Monday, February nineteenth, 2024, for President's Day, which means the town council meeting will be on Tuesday, February twentieth, 2024. With that said, it is now eight eleven, and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.